December 21st, 2017, hall board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. A standard of amication. Chairman, Father, we thank you for another day. God, we thank you for the very breath that you've given us, Lord, to be here. God, we pray, Lord, that you look down on us tonight, Lord, as we try to make decisions, Lord, that would be, that will be a large impact, Lord, on our county, our community, Lord, and all of those, Lord, that are involved. God, we pray that you'd ever give us wisdom when we are faced with these decisions. God, lead, guide, and direct us in all that we do. We ask these favors in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is going to be to amend the presented agenda. I'll make the motion to amend the presented agenda to add in number five, superintendent report to discuss CCRPI. Do you hear a second for that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Long, any discussion? Hall in favor? Oh, motion carries. Next will be to approve the amended agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Your second? Second, Mrs. Wine, any discussion? Hall in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Before we start the superintendent report, I want to do a, and we don't do this a lot, but I think it's good to do this occasionally, and that's talk about the, and that's going to be just a quick statement here as far as the governance structure of public schools and just take just a brief moment to describe the duties of the board and the superintendent. The Georgia Constitution declares that "the provision of adequate public education for the citizens shall be a primary obligation of the state of Georgia." Providing an adequate public education involves a partnership between the state government and local units of government. While local boards of education are charged with the management and control of public schools, they must respond to and follow federal and state laws, regulations, and rules enacted by Congress, Georgia's General Assembly, the State Board of Education, the State Department of Education, and many other state and federal administrative agencies, and the subsequent interpretations placed on those enactments by the state and federal courts. So what are the most significant duties and functions of a board of education? The Georgia General Assembly has attempted to define the fundamental role of local boards of education as establishing policy with a focus on student achievement, and this is really what I wanted to get to here, in the same statute that warns that boards should not micromanage the superintendent, but should hold him or her accountable. And just to bring that part to light, student achievement, everything that we do here, everything that's presented to us, we have to look at student achievement and how it ties to student achievement. That is what we are held accountable for. And we should probably discuss things like this more often so the public really realizes that things are presented to us and we look at it with that one, with that underlying goal.
Just a couple of things. I know that we're going to have a workshop right after Christmas to go over the CCRPI. We have not gotten all of our CCRPI scores yet. You know, we received a little bit today or yesterday on the, oh, which one is embargoed? It's...
The star?
No, the star.
Beating the odds.
Beating odds. And it's something about gambling. And it still has not been released yet along with some of the other data. So we're waiting for all the CCRPI stuff to come in and then we'll do a full presentation on it. But I do want to do a quick presentation on our, the main thrust of that, which is Georgia milestones and some reading force test things. So I've got Tony and Dana going to help me with milestones and how we compare to last year's milestones. And Dana, what?
Well, we divided it by the grade, the subject, how they did in 2017, and then, of course, comparing it to the year before. And so you see that in ELA, in third grade, we went up by a point. Fourth grade, we went up by two points. We took a drop in fifth grade with a seven, a seven-point decline. We went up in fifth grade. We took decline in seventh grade with seven points, and then we went up four points in eighth grade. So our ELA, there are pockets that there are issues, but when you look overall, our scores really did not take too big of a hit in ELA. Then in fifth and eighth grade science, we don't test in any other grade levels anymore with science except for fifth and eighth grade, elementary and middle school. So for science, we took a negative seven in fifth grade, and eighth grade, we went up eight points. So we again see where we have some areas we need to focus on. Fifth grade social studies, we went down and with almost five points. And social studies, in eighth grade, we went up in three points, went up three points. Our math, sort of the same thing. Third grade math, we went up point three, so basically stayed the same. Fourth grade, we took 11-point hits. We went down 11 points. Fifth grade, we went down four. Sixth grade, we went up 4.5 this year. Seventh grade, we took a big hit, went down 20 points on our milestone scores. Eighth grade EOG, our eighth grade survived. We have some students that are doing regular eighth grade math, and we have some students who are doing the Going Ahead and Taking the Algebra I high school math, so they take it, they take it EOC, so that's the difference. So our eighth grade EOG, our end-of-grade scores, went up eight points. Our eighth grade Algebra I scores went up 33 points. Now, these were our, this is our, they're our proficient and our distinguished learners. So that's what we're striving to be aiming for. We want all kids to be at that level. So those were the scores that we really looked at the most as far as this presentation.
I think what's important that we need to, is it okay if I talk?
Sure.
Yeah. Sorry, just making sure I'm not out of the floor. What we need to think, it looks like there was a pattern with that fifth grade class. And I think what we, as people, sometimes need to think about, or what we don't think about, is when we compare these scores from year to year, we're comparing children, and they're going to always be different from year to year because it's not the same students taking the test. I think this fifth grade class will probably see a trend next year. I mean, when you're comparing the whole population, we're going to be able to see these scores kind of continue on the same path. Now, I mean, we should be helping these students to try to improve their scores for next year. Absolutely, we should be. But, you know, I think sometimes when we say we're comparing scores from year to year, we have to remember that we're comparing different children that are taking these tests. So I just want the public to understand that, you know, when they see these scores, we're not always comparing apples to apples.
And our teachers are working diligently and so hard to try to meet the needs of all of their students, and those needs change, sometimes on a daily basis, but definitely on a yearly basis. So, you know, it is difficult to meet all of their needs, but they are working so hard to do that, and...
So what are some of the things, Mike?
Okay. So, these are some of the areas, these are our current steps to improve. One of the things the district did was to hire a curriculum director for elementary and middle, so that would be new. We have a heavy focus on RTI. A lot of our, a lot of what we're not, we're not seeing our children grow as much or hit some of those achievement levels from year to year, the same, looking at the same children. So we are, have a heavy focus this year on RTI, and that's our lowest 25% of our student population in academics. And so we're really, we've done a lot of training, we've revamped our different campus to be able to document easier. It's all on our, on that program, so it makes it easier for teachers to easily look at the data. So we've really focused on that. Increased reading fluency, increased rigor, we're demanding, you know, having kids have to think about what they're learning. Contract services, we have hired a, several certified teachers, retired mainly, who are coming back into our school system and really focusing on the needs of our ELA and math students, and really giving them extra practice and help. We have focused on the Department of Education's math frameworks, which is what they want us to be following. We're writing on a daily basis. We're using the writing rubrics from the DOE in all subjects. And then we have morning, afternoon tutoring, and we also have, are beginning to really focus, have a heavier focus on personalized learning, which is differentiation, but it's also allowing the students to review and accelerate as needed. For middle school, it's basically the same, curriculum director, a heavy focus on RTI. We hired the contract employees for those students as well to have more focus. We're writing across all content areas, using the rubrics, heavier focus on levels three and four, questioning, those are the higher-level questioning techniques and strategies. They're using the GOFAR State Assessment Program, which has a lot of writing components to it, their exemplars, so that they can see what they're supposed to be achieving. We've increased rigor, and we also are focusing on personalized learning.
Any questions?
We will do a, of course, Tony's going to talk just a second about some of the things going on at the high school, but just keep in mind that we will grab first of the year, we'll have a call meeting, and we'll have all of our principals and our athletic directors, our coaches, we'll also have our athletic director, but our academic coaches, and we'll hear from school to school what's going on in each individual school.
Yeah, I'll just talk to you for a second. We're excited at the high school about how we did this year and the things that we've got coming in the future. There's a lot of good stuff going on down there. And first and foremost, I have to thank the board for hiring the leadership that we've got. Mr. Wallace is, he is awesome. He is ready to do whatever needs to be done. He's extremely supportive. And one of the issues that the high school has faced over the last few years is staff turnover. We have departments at Pickens High School that over the course of three years have lost 12, 15 teachers. And that makes it very difficult when you're losing those kinds of numbers, you have that kind of turnover, it's tough. And so stable leadership that the teachers are comfortable with and supports them, and they know that, and I hear it all the time, they really thank a lot of Mr. Wallace, they thank a lot of the board, and they thank a lot of the superintendent. You know, I hear those things, and that tells me that through that support and through the positive feelings that we're experiencing, I think we're going to retain more of our staff, first and foremost, so that we can work with those teachers and improve them in the areas that they need to improve in and make them an asset for us. One of the things Mr. Wallace and I have already talked about is implementing some type of support system for the teachers at Pickens High School where those that are struggling for whatever reason can be identified and can be helped in a positive way, not in a negative way with bad observations and situations, but positive help where we build relationships with those teachers, and they see that and understand that, and we can keep them. So that's going to be big going forward. Of course, we won't reap the rewards of that for a couple of years, but I really think that the boards of leadership and superintendent together have really put the staff in place there that I think is going to pay dividends in the future. And I know the elementary school CCRPI scores dropped, and that's disappointing, I know that, but there is a possibility of some good news I want to share with you, and I've got a PowerPoint that breaks everything down later on, but I just wanted to share with you that in 2013, PHS was sitting on a 79 CCRPI. The next year, it dropped 10 points. We dropped to 69. And I was down there as a teacher that year, and everybody was scratching their head, and everybody was wondering what in the world happened, and it was very difficult to verbalize exactly what happened to us. But the positive news is that since 2014, Pickens High School has been on an upward trend, so that this year's CCRPI score was almost 80, 79.8. So it, you know, I know that the scores have dropped at the elementaries, but we're going to get them back. It can be done. Pickens High School has done it, and I'm not saying we're satisfied with 79.8 because we're not. And that's the exciting part. The things that we're going to do moving forward, I think, are going to impact in a tremendous way test results in CCRPI at Pickens High School, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But for now, as we focus on the testing, as we break down the EOC scores at Pickens High School, there are eight EOCs, and we only saw a decrease in scores in three areas. So in five areas, we had increases. Some of them drastic, ninth grade lit, we had an eight-point gap, and that's awesome. We've got good people in place in our English department, they're doing some good things, and we're reaping the benefits of that. We had a small drop in physical science of three points, and it fluctuates. Physical science is one of those that it's up and it's down, and it's up and it's down. But a three-point, three-point drop there, we had an eight-point drop in Algebra I. And oddly enough, we had a six-point drop in U.S. history. All of the rest of our EOC scores actually improved. And so we need to focus on the science, and we need to focus on the math, and we are, and we need to focus on that social studies. And that leads me to one of the things that we've been doing this year in terms of training. And I've told the board this before, another piece of bad news is that EOCs are changing in science and social studies, and we're changing the standards and we're changing the test. So science and social studies are having kind of grips with a new test again. And so our PL training outside of the building, while we've tried to keep it limited, we've also been very focused with it. Mr. Wallace has been a big help in improving with a limited amount of resources. We've been sending science teachers, and we've been sending social studies teachers specifically to workshops to try to get them prepared for the changes that are coming in the standards, and, of course, the changes that will occur on the test. So the outside training's been very targeted in that area. The inside training has been more general, and I've done that with the teachers down at the high school. One of the things that we will benefit from immediately through the training that we've done this year, I hope, is that we are focusing on, with the teachers at the high school, on teaching at the proper level of knowledge. The state calls it the DOK. There are four depth of knowledge levels, one being the lowest, which is simple recall, four being the highest, which is strategic extended thinking. And unfortunately, a lot of times, we find in breaking down the data that our teachers are teaching very well at a Level 1 and a Level 2. Unfortunately, with many of those standards, when you deconstruct them, which we've had training on, when you break those standards down and look at them more closely, they're not going to test at a 1 or a 2 level. You can have that Level 1 and 2 knowledge nailed, but they're not going to be asking questions at that level. All of the questions are going to be asked at a Level 3 or a Level 4. And so I've done training with the faculty down there on, it's called deconstructing the standards. But basically what it is, is critically reading the standard and then breaking it down and letting it tell you what I need to teach and the level that I need to teach it at. And so we've had training at the high school on that, and we've had training with the teachers on constructing their test in the classroom at the proper level. If the state's going to test them at a DOK 3 on a test item, and you teach and test at a DOK 1, and they all make 100, you pat yourself on the back, then you get your test scores back, and you're scratching your head because it's a disaster. You know, a lot of teachers don't see that big picture there in that it's simply you taught at the wrong level of knowledge. And so we're doing things like teaching, and our department chairs are working with our teachers on scaffolding because it's difficult sometimes to get a student from a 1 to a 4, or even from a 1 to a 2 sometimes. It's difficult to do that without having certain tools, certain resources that gives you the ability to get that done. So we've been working on that, and that's going to reap rewards across all of the EOCs. If we're teaching at the right level, that's going to help. And speaking of teaching, that leads to another thing we're really excited about at Pickens High School, and Mr. Wallace is really excited about. We're going to do some changes to the scheduling at the high school, nothing radical. We're not, we're not going to go in and do anything radical. But what we, what we do here for the teachers and students a lot of times is that in those lower-level courses, in physical science, for example, and in those math classes, some of those students have a difficult time staying focused for 96 minutes. And some of our teachers struggle to teach those students for 96 minutes effectively. 96 minutes is a long time. And so what we're looking at doing with some of our courses, and we're working with, through Mr. Wallace, and we're going to be working with our teachers and our department chairs, tell us what courses you feel would be more effective if they were broken down into a 45-minute class that was taught all year long, so that you've got those students that may have a difficult time focusing, you're in there working with them for 45 minutes, and you're in there with them every single day all year long before they take that EOC. And so the teachers are very excited. Dr. Wilson has been down there and talked to them on a number of occasions, and they actually voted to make these changes to the schedule, which Tulane knows that's a big deal with the high school. When they, when you talk about schedule changes, sometimes it can get kind of scary, but they're very excited. And Mr. Wallace was a big help in making sure that there was excitement there and that we're going to make that happen. And that helps us in another way, in that we're going to try our very best to take all of the courses that have EOCs associated with them and make all of those courses either 45-minute long all year or second semester block. Well, some students can handle 96 minutes. That's not a problem. They're going to, they're going to be fine. But the result of that will be that all of our EOC testing is going to be at the end of the year. We're not going to be shutting PHS down two times per year and losing seven, eight, nine instructional days in December. We're just going to keep brought in teaching all the way through to the end of the year, and then we'll give EOCs. So I think we're going to reap the benefits from that. And I'm going to go ahead and tell you, it wasn't, it wasn't my idea or anything like that. We are, we have a very good relationship with Union County. As a matter of fact, Mr. Wallace and I and Marla, his assistant, are, we're going to go up there January 4th, we're going to meet with the principal at Union County, and he's going to sit down and talk. I've already been up with the department chairs, and they were very excited. And so now the admins are going to go up, and we're going to sit down with Mr. Hushin. Their CCRPI score this past year was almost a 99. That's aggravating. So we're going, we're up there, and to their credit, they're sharing everything. They're not holding anything back. They're telling us everything. Here's what's really working well. Here are the things we did that are not working well, that we're probably not going to do anymore. And so we're going to bring that back, and we're going to sit down, and we're going to create a master schedule off of that that implements some of the things that they're doing up there. And so while we are on a positive trend, have been for the last three years, 79.8's not, that's not acceptable. That's not where Pickens High School should be. Pickens High School is better than that. Our faculty's better than that. Our administration's better than that. And we're going to make sure that in the coming years, our CCRPI score reflects who we really are. Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. First will be the district calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement that we're very thankful for the staff and the public input on the creation of our 2018-2019 school calendar. However, due to the decline of our CCRPI scores at the elementary level and some of the stress that goes with uncertainty with staff over grade level configurations and their placement this coming year, I don't want to create any more stress and turmoil. I'm recommending the traditional 180-day school calendar. This will allow my staff more time to research a possible correlation between a shorter school year and student achievement that we'll be able to bring back with some, a little bit of research, and we'll relook at that again next year. So I'm recommending the calendar that's in your packet of 180 days with 198 for teachers.
So basically, we're looking at a similar calendar to what we have this year?
Very similar. One of the differences are primarily, the main difference is moving September's Fall Break to Fall. Making the week of October the 8th coincide with Columbus Day. This year, we are disconnecting Easter from spring break. Easter actually comes on the 21st of April. We're actually going to keep it the first week of April, which coincides also with the, hopefully with the Chattanooga Tech calendar, and they try to match hours and chair weeks for spring break for our students that are there for a move on and ready. Any questions about this calendar?
I'm sure there's going to be lots of people happy and lots that are unhappy that it's not changing.
There are, and, but I do believe with the, everything else that we're attempting to do this year with stress and uncertainty, anytime somebody has uncertainty, that's always added stress, and we want students to, teachers and students both to stay as focused as we possibly can to bring in both CCRPI scores. We don't want the calendar to be a part of that issue.
And I would like to just add thanks to all the people who, the staff and the public who came forward and listened and gave us their input. I appreciate Dr. Wilson taking the time and the energy that it took to do that, and all the people who've worked on 15 million different calendars that we've worked at, because I know that's time-consuming and frustrating. But I do feel like we've come to the right conclusion after looking at a lot of different factors.
I think from your, being on the board of the calendar, probably the most controversial, possibly the most controversial thing.
The only thing I can remember that was more controversial was when we tried to impose dress code, law dress code changes. That went here.
Yeah. Yeah. I remember.
I think it also gave us some good feedback for it next year when we do look at it. I mean, that we were really, instead of rushing into something, that we had an opportunity to look at different calendars and different schedules. And so this year, when we see our test scores, you know, and see the things that are improving that, you know, we have an opportunity, we have looked at different calendars now, and we do have some feedbacks. So when we go to next year, we'll go in it a little more with our eyes wide open. But I do appreciate everyone that took the time to give their opinion, and Dr. Wilson and all the staff that made those 10 calendars or so that we looked at. So thank you for all that everybody did for us to present something for us to look at.
I hear a motion to approve the district calendar as presented.
I make a motion to resume, to approve the district calendar as presented.
Motion, Ms. Lewis. Your second?
All second.
Second, Ms. Finley. Is there any discussion? Hall in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next, the grade level configurations.
Chairman, again, I would like to thank everyone who participated in all of our meetings to discuss grade level configurations. There was a lot of good information, pros and cons to all of them. Our most popular option, we had 255 out of 324 voters that wanted, which was about 80% of those that attended voted. This is the same option that I am recommending, and it is the one that results in 3K for schools, 1.5, 6, 1.7, 8, and then 9 through 12.
That was with that recommendation there, and I'm sure there's going to be a time in the future when also a game plan will go into place. A couple of things that quickly came to my mind is as far as our strategic waivers and how our schools are designated now...
how our schools are designated now, of course, our CCRPIs, that will change obviously when we kill middle school. Will we be in a situation of amending our strategic waiver contract to reflect no longer having the same configuration? And obviously, it's going to be a question where we'd have to ask somebody on the state what Black do as far as where our baseline scores were since we no longer will have a school designated in that area. And I'm sure that this is not something that they obviously go through this because obviously they would restrict you from doing. But that was just something that came to mind.
As far as the scores, we have looked at it, and one that really changes the most would be our 5th and 6th grade schools, because actually there we will get a combination of an elementary score and a middle school score, but then they also do a combination score of those two together, because there are numerous schools across the state that are, have that configuration. So it will be a little bit of difference, but you can still go back and break down if needed to each individual grades and all of their scores. So there will be a little bit of reconfiguration on our part as far as how we report scores and how we look at them. It won't be that much.
So you're saying they're going to break out our existing scores, the 5th and 6th?
They will give us-
Is that how they'll make a baseline for 5th and 6th?
They will, and that's what they do. They, actually, the 5th and 6th grade schools that have 5th and 6th grade in it, they would issue the 5th grade, because there's different indicators, and they'll issue us a 5th grade score, and then they'll issue us a 6th grade score, and then with their magic pixie dust, they add them together, and we come up with a school score of a combination of the two.
That's right. A little bit of change.
There will be some more to change.
Yeah, because right now, we will have, but elementary school, if we approved it, that will no longer exist yet. It's being calculated by our strategic waivers, you know, so those will be dispersed out somewhere else.
A little bit-
Right. Yeah. So those scores are, it's going to be up to this point, and then they stop, and those kids will be dispersed out. And I'm sure they have a, they're going to have a solution.
And we're talking with the State Department, and there may be a little bit of amending of our contract with them, and if they, if we're talking with them, they're going to set us up here.
Well, I guess that's, that's part of the waivers we signed into, is to be able to reconfigure and do what we need to do to-
I had a quick question too, because I had some folks asking, I think I know the answer, but I want it to be out. There won't be any people losing, there won't be any teachers that will lose their job. We still have the same amount of students to teach, right? They'll just be, some will just be shuffled. Is that true?
My goal is that no one will lose their job because of the reconfiguration. I know the, as far as teachers, we have some new students, and we just have to disperse teachers from where those classes are. There may be a few special areas that we may have an extra person in that special area, but there's always ways that we can use that person. And then I do believe over the next couple of years, two years, that we would, through attrition, be able to, you know, sell everybody back in, but, and I know I've talked to some of our art teachers, and just for instance, if we add one art teacher more than we needed, I'd love to use that art teacher at K2, using art to correlate with learning outside of the regular art class, but in the academic class. So there's things like, same thing with music. So there's those kinds of things that we actually would benefit if we have a little bit of extra teachers in some areas. But no one, my, my plan is that no one loses their job over a reconfiguration.
And we do have enough room at PCMS to do what we're planning to do currently, or are we going to be building?
No. One of the things that we will ask in a few minutes on some of our planning is that when we, when we put that new front on the school and we move the offices to the front, we're going to take that entire office area and convert that back, convert those into classrooms. But we'll be fine if PCMS, we won't be able, or we won't be crowded.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I think we heard during all the discussions. People were concerned that with whatever we were doing, that we were going to do something that's going to make huge class sizes, and that's not, that's absolutely not what we're looking for. We're actually looking, in some cases, to reduce class sizes.
Well, we'll be able to offer a lot more to the kids in 7th and 8th grade, so hopefully we'll be able to make the classes smaller, because we're going to be able to offer them more electives like foreign languages and things of that nature, right?
That would, that would be our goal, yes. Absolutely.
And then I had some special requests from, you know, here's from a selfish reason. When we have these new students coming to 5th, 6th school and the 7th, 8th school, our JMS students might have a special orientation at PCMS, so they're not walking around blindly their first year. I'm sure we'll have plans in place-
We will have.
So they can take tours and get to meet their teachers.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make it as smooth a transition as possible for the teachers and the kids.
Same thing would have to happen in your 5th and 6th.
5th and 6th grade school too.
And, you know, if we do the 5th and 6th grade school, our division next month, the board naming that school officially, so, I mean, so we start branding it and getting everything ready for it.
Okay.
Your motion to approve the grade level configuration is, make a minute?
I make a motion to approve the grade level configurations as presented.
Second.
Ms. Lewis, second to Mr. Wong. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next will be a priority list for the capital expenditures.
Mr. Chairman, we've got a list of faculty improvement plan, high line, with-
I'm pretty sure.
With the dollar amounts per project. And in a minute, I'm going to ask for some actual projects that's coming up shortly, but Mr. Stacy's going to go through this with us real quickly.
The architect sat down with us, and, you know, we talked about this at one meeting, when he selected him, and started working on a timeline. And our timeline is geared and controls a lot by splash collections, because it's my goal, and I think it's Dr. Wilson's goal, to not bond any money, to use the money as it comes in. And that's maybe extra money. I think it's very fiscal responsible, and I think it's the way we need to handle this. So as we start planning these things, we've put numbers on some of these projects you see, and those are, those are high-end numbers because we haven't sat down and fixed a program exactly what we're going to do everywhere for each school and everything else. So these are ballpark numbers to get us started, to let us know that our splash can handle it, and that our collections will come in at a time when we can pay for this stuff without bothering. Now, when you do numbers like this, I always take care of myself. I don't want to have a short file. So these numbers are for discussion, planning, and scheduling only. When we, when we come up with a project, I will bring the project to you after you've decided what you want to do, and we bid it with hard numbers. These are not hard numbers. These are numbers for budget and planning. I just want everybody to know that. But in this phasing process, now that you have decided on grade configuration, we have to plan on helping Pickens Middle School out with ag facilities, fixing the additional classrooms, and I would love, and I hope you do too, want to put a safety vest on the front with offices, because you now can walk directly into the school. Our goal is to envision to be totally enclosed, instead of walking outside to the gym, walking outside to the band, and possibly putting an auditorium in between the existing building and the gymnasium, you know, 200 or 300-seat auditorium, to have another venue for their students, you know, we can have drama now in 7th and 8th, because that would be a great thing. So anyway, that's what we're doing. But to do anything at Pickens Middle School, I really got to move the baseball field. And to move the baseball field, I got to go to the high school and build one. I can't build one now, because soccer and football and everybody uses these three, or two and a half practice fields to practice on, because you can't practice on a turf, a grass field, and it survived. If you remember two years ago, when soccer had that torrential downpour, and they had that soccer tournament that weekend, and it destroyed our field, and unfortunately, we had to move soccer to Jasper Middle School just to survive that season. All right, my point I'm getting to, phase one, is athletic projects at the high school, and it's not that we're trying to move athletics in front of anything, but I've got to do this to be able to get on the middle school campus to do our projects. And the middle school project is going to take nine months to a year to design, permit, state DOE approval, and all that. So it doesn't just happen overnight. This is a process we have to go through to get this, and, you know, the DOE approves everything we do. Like, we can't build a building without them approving, so, and it's a process. So the first thing we're going to ask you tonight, when you see by our priority list here, is going to be at the high school, do the field turf, track upgrades, LED lights, the welcome center. And as we're doing that, we will be designing the baseball and locker room facility, and the girls' locker room for soccer and all that, and doing some upgrades to the softball concessions and all, and doing the welcome center there at the front when we first come in. As that process is going on, we will design the rest of the projects and bring them to you in a fashion that we can afford to do this and let you approve all the projects and all that. But that's, that's a master schedule. That is a working document that can change daily, but I would not change it without bringing it to you with my best recommendation when I do that, and that'll be consulting with Dr. Wilson on a daily basis. We are, we do want to, as we do build out and do some work at Pickens Middle School, we do want to do some modification renovation, which I earned that money from the state, a lot of money, four to five million dollars, basically. That can redo floors, ceilings, lights, paint, bathrooms, fixtures, HVAC, and that kind of stuff. So we want to build that all into it and do it all at one time, and acquire that state money so we don't have to use all our splash money to do that. So it's a big savings. The money's available because we earn it. And by doing your new grade configuration, we picked up $900,000 additional money by doing this. So it was a good benefit for my end of this business anyway, so I can do more for the schools. So as we go through this, I'll talk about any project individually as it comes up. You got any questions on this schedule, and this, what we're looking at, or anything I need to explain better?
Yeah, the baseball field. Our baseball field at Pickens County Middle School, that is our high school.
Baseball.
That's a big use of high school.
Has for years. It works, but there's no handicap accessibility, and a few things I have to do every year just to prepare it to play. We're hoping that area can be the ag facility with a barn, and they can even have a pasture type deal there for, if they're going to go and do some cattle. I think it's a great idea, as big as we are in ag over here. We have the hitting facility there now that we could convert into offices and a cannery if we wanted to move the cannery, because our cannery, if you've been in the building, it's fallen down. It's dangerous. But that kind of stuff, you know, we have a lot of new equipment in the cannery. We have a boiler that's in great shade and things like that. That can all be placed over there, have our main ag facility there, and at the high school, together side by side, really. I think we can do some really good things with ag department.
What I'm hearing you saying is this is sort of a domino effect, and if we want to get to this place, we have to do this, which affects this, which affects this.
And I promise you, we could do, but Pickens Middle School project first, and it controlled the domino effect, that's what I would recommend, because we've been looking at this, I've been looking at it for three years.
Now, track as well?
Track as well. Track will be totally dug up, started over and redone, six immaculate lanes. We just got all new pole vault, high jump equipment and all that through the hailstorm damage, so we'll be replacing all that, and we'll be upgrading. We want to, we want to move cross country there for, and baseball for safety reasons, and not be traveling to Pickens Middle School every day just to practice. Cross country can have a well of a track there that can be one of the best in the state for very little money, because that's minimal to build out.
So this will put all of our high school sports at our high school?
At our-
And our students won't have to travel back and forth, and there won't be as many safety issues that we have now?
The only thing that would not be at the high school would be golf and swimming. And I don't recommend golf.
No, we could afford that, it would be in a good place.
But, you know, there's not a reason that when we do this, we'll have to put a facility there, a baseball team, a softball team, for dressing rooms and all that kind of stuff. You put a different type net in, and golf can practice. There's no reason they can't. Cheerleaders can practice in there, wrestling can practice in there. We might build a multi-purpose building for this hitting facility, but we don't limit it like it is now. It's strictly, you go and hit baseball or softball, and that's all you can use it for. We don't do that to this building. We make it one that we can use for all our people.
And we make all these updates, it will be also better used by the community, not just our school?
Well, yeah. When, when we get to the turf and all, and I'll tell you the price and all that in a minute, that's our goal. Coach Parker can speak on that. All the schools around us, every school in this area has turf now, in this region, regions around us, bigger and smaller schools, they all have turf. And what they've done with the turf is pretty great, because I got a grandbaby that plays on it every Saturday. They go to my high schools in those areas, and Park and Rec plays their games on Saturday, just about all day, on the school turf. Have you heard it?
So it benefits our community?
Benefits the whole community. It gives, it really, it really makes us look good around here too. I'm telling you, it's just a good thing. And then soccer can play on it year-round, practice on it, football can practice on it, stood it on a practice field, they practice on the field they're playing on, band can use it. I mean, it's, it's just, I know, I know it sounds like I'm trying to keep up with the Joneses, but we're behind, we're behind on this stuff. Our athletic facilities have not been touched in years.
Hello, Coach?
The athletes out there since they built them, 1997? 1967?
Can I get y'all just to address a question that I know is going to come up every which way? What's going to happen now to the Jasper Middle School campus?
Nothing's going to happen to the campus itself. We will still own that campus. My goal would be to place Mount Ned over that building right now, so that they will have immediately new roof. I have been, I've talked to one of our fire marshals, and him and I have talked, and there's a 300 wing that they left me to fit in. I've also talked to JYSI, they were concerned about being able to use the gym, and the football builds some more, but of course, we helped fix the football, but to be able to use the gym. Our goal is that really to be able to use some of those facilities even more so with our communities. And there's some potential down the road organizations that we may want to even consider leasing it. Ultimately, we're going to, somewhere down the road, we're going to tear it down and move it out, and then we, at that point, can look at some rather inexpensive modular type pods, not, not trailers, not trailers, but modular pods that are very efficient, but a lot cheaper than building a building.
Perfect for most types of jobs. Yeah, the campus can't go away. We've got too many things going on over there now. I don't, we would be able to shut a couple of corridors down, wings, and cut them way back, and should close them off and all that. That, now that, now that you figure great, you've given the great configurations, level of configuration, I can start really very serious. And I even told my guys today, I said, if this passes, we got to have a hard car, we got to land before May gets here. We got to be ready to get. So it's, it's exciting, it's, it's kind of what I do. I kind of like it.
We're glad you like it.
You know, none of this is, none of this is set in stone. This is, we're planning, you know, guys, we're planning. we're planning. I'm gonna be back to y'all a hundred times saying, what do you think about doing this over here? What do you think about this? And you've hired a great architect, we're recommending a great construction company tonight. They both will say this one, and they know me, they know how I work, and I'll take it if they give us a deal.
Well, we're glad we have you to...
I appreciate it.
And will all of our middle school stuff be basically functioning at the high school as well, on the new football field?
We're envisioning them playing their games there, right?
Yeah, they could, I think that's an option. We have to get all this approved, we're gonna go to the next thing, but there's opportunities for them to play there. Right now, our baseball team at the middle school plays in Roosevelt Park, and they would probably have to continue that until the baseball, new baseball field will be built. And then maybe if the schedule permitted, they could do it. But basketball, I assume, will still be at Pickens County Middle School like it is now, because they have a gym there, volleyball. But football and soccer, if we worked around the schedule with the high school team, we would love, we would love to have them. And the whole point of this, that opportunity is, we would love to have them. They can't tear up the grass, we'd love that for the Pickens. Be a great opportunity, have them play on the same field, the older guys, they're a good place.
I know with the basketball, they've got a junior program that plays kind of outside of the middle school, and they practice and play at the high school, and those middle school kids love getting to play on the big ball. Absolutely, it just draws more.
And that's what I, you, all of what I say, every art cultural county, you know, all about the county, have that opportunity, and so most of their outdoor activities happen at the high school field, where we've been having to send them to the middle school to play, you know, and so we're excited to give them an opportunity.
Another part of the domino effect, the reason that we're probably bringing some, a lot of stuff to you tonight is, we have to start, we can't even graduate there this year. I mean, we'll be doing something different. And you know, that's the only facility in the county big enough to hold graduation. You're gonna have four to five thousand people there before you, and that's June, that's May, end of May. So if, you know, that's why we're pushing the domino effect on the first phase. After that, we'll do exactly how you wanna do it and when you wanna do it, as the money blows and all that. And Amy swears we got the money. I think y'all should call her and let her come up here.
She was gonna be here and she said, I haven't asked, so I won't try to sneak out, so I guess she snuck out.
The office was off, I wanted to ask.
I don't really know if there's any action needs to be taken on this, that's up to y'all. I just know you need to see the schedule, and you will want to see some round numbers, and I hope that's, that's what we've gotten you here. You wanna talk about these other projects on here, or what do you, what would you like to know?
Let me ask specifically, when would, obviously, and this is something that's been talked about now for over a year, or longer than that, so I envision this, but when will this, as far as drawings, where we actually can see?
For Pickens Middle School?
Yeah, Pickens County Middle School.
I would say we're probably three months from now. We've really gotta sit down and maybe you put one person on the committee that brings your people, brings your ideas, so we don't have to have a call meeting and all that. And we just start, and I call it a program, we go to the middle school and we talk to them, we decide what they want, how they need their labs, how they need their science labs, how they need, all their areas that they need, and we build what we're building to fit their needs, and we put it into our program of the building. Then we come back to you guys and say, all right, you wanna put gold trim, or we're gonna put wood trim. You know what I'm saying? We gotta do that kinda stuff. Then the architect can start, he can get a feel for it, and you'll be amazed what he comes up with, and it'll look really good, it'll be efficient. Our buildings aren't efficient, and I don't mean they're not efficient for the heat and air, we don't use our space wise. It's inefficient building that we've got on some of these things. We wanna use every space. We don't wanna have an empty space because it's a corner and you couldn't get anything in there. We gotta be smarter than that, we gotta do things better than that. So that's, I'd say three months for drawings at least, but I gotta have information before I can get drawings.
Information will probably be more clear. Once we have the designated classes in there?
Yes.
Then things will arise that...
And that's gonna be you middle school principals deciding your programs, and Tony and Dana and figuring out your programs you're gonna have. Then we gotta figure out where we're putting them, and how many people you think's gonna be in them, what areas we need to do this. I mean, there's some things that's cut and dry, your science labs and your TTA, your ag areas, that's pretty well cut and dry, they're gonna be in those areas. But some of the others can be reconfigured and done a little differently, it doesn't really cost much. You gotta decide what you wanna do on the safety vest, you wanna, and the offices at the front. You want an auditorium? How big an auditorium? You want a hundred seat? I can do that cheap. You want two hundred and fifty seat? Gets a little more expensive. You gotta know those kinda things. Can't design it if I don't...
Go ahead and build a four thousand seat, that would be an graduation there.
You'll have to build a three-story, because it won't fit in that supply.
Well, I assume, I assume those kinda questions will probably be, be just brought to, we don't know that, it's gonna be the principals and the...
That's exactly, we gotta, we gotta set a group together, and we need somebody academically, we need athletically, we need the principals, we need the people that are gonna be taking care of that school, tell us, and the teachers, of course. I mean, they're the department heads and things, I think are very important. So, I mean, we, there's a lot to decide before I can give you any drawings.
Exciting.
Scary.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Thanks for getting us this far.
If you say down there, you know, the office warehouse space, you know, we've, we've taken, we've been given the chance to have Jasper Elementary, the old gym back, and technology was kinda displaced because of us moving North Star and all that. So we're, we're gonna build a technology offices there, is what we wanna do, and have it for central registration and all, a pretty nice little place and all. We've got, show them, any of our middle school teachers, we've got junk stored at Jasper Middle School underneath that fill house. Let's destroy it because it's not conditioned, it's growing mold, it's awful. I wouldn't put it in a building. So we've got an opportunity with this to build a nice warehouse and do it right. Our desk and things, if we can reuse, keep them and reuse them, instead of letting them set somewhere to be destroyed. It's, it's just an opportunity that I think we can be more efficient, we can centralize some of our buying for stuff and save some money buying bulk, I mean, buy the paper layer, distribute it instead of buying from individual people. I bought it from co-op for years, you know, or... So, I mean, there's a few things there I'm looking, I'm thinking it'll be exciting, but we've got a loading dock, we'd like to have a loading dock because Paul Patrick has taken stuff off his truck over there in the middle of the street half the time because we have nowhere to get it off trucks, and you couldn't even have a board meeting over there at one time because we had seven hundred Peru Ethne boards stuck in there, but we need an area for that, and this gym was perfect for it, didn't cost us a thing because we owned it. And just a little bit of money remodeling. We'll have a server room, new server room with a generator on it, so we do not lose our internet like we do now, unless internet goes down, we won't lose it because of power.
Also here, you got, on the administrative building, also that is this facility here?
That's this building here, and we're not looking at spending a lot of money. What we'd like to do is make this the boardroom, it's what it was built for and what we'd like to do. And what we've talked about, Mark, that he's actually isn't drawing on me, so I wish I had it with him, and move this wall out, I don't know how far, but the lobby's huge, but it'd still be a plenty big lobby. You would have a little raised up area here, and this is where the board would probably sit, right in here. And then we could have some screens, we could have a couple of screens where the audience, or you know, here and there, would pull down, the audience could see this stuff better and clearer. We'd seat everybody out this way, and just make it a little better, neater area. And we really need, and the high school especially, when testing comes along, we have to take the people everywhere to test. We've got this, the old library, the boardroom now, we can very minimally fix it, where we can partition it off here and there and open it up, we can have open area for big meetings, we can half it or quarter it and have testing areas and stuff like that. And in my opinion, be our professional development center, that's where all the trainings could go. We have nowhere to do that now. I know, you, you know how many times y'all come over here and there's not even room to go and sit down and talk to them, so. I was envisioning a professional development center over there, that's minimal money too. So that's part of that district administrative. We would take the mailroom, make that an office, and just move those mailboxes, it was originally an office anyway. Downstairs, we got a lobby area that's just wide open, nothing you wanna do, dish, you put two offices there, that kinda stuff, just really minimal money compared to what it would normally take to do something like that.
And the money we can get from the state, that will go to Pickens Middle School renovations?
Right. We will, we were, we are hoping later in the splash, toward the end, that we can do a renovation at the high school too. But the high school drew some money out when they built the new PAC and that wing, fine arch wing, they took a lot of money out, so it's just now coming back a little. We can give that a couple more, three years, we can get three or four million there, and do a major, major facelift down there, new ceiling, new lights, new floors.
People may not understand what you're saying, that we can pull money out from the state?
Yeah. We earn, we earn money, it's called entitlement from the state, it is based on IU's, which are instructional units, so like, all our schools now have a few extra IU, so you're really not earning a lot of money by moving these, closing the middle school, moving that, combining the elementaries and doing Jasper with us five, six, it's, it's made some of our wasted space go away, like Pickens, like Pickens Middle School and Jasper Middle School had extra space because it wasn't being used, weren't really earning anything. We were earning renovation money because of age of the buildings, but when you need IU's, you get more money. So now we'll be able to maximize our money, especially the high school with it growing up, but your renovation modification is, modification money is based on the age of ten years of a building. After that, you start earning money. You get to fifteen years on certain items, you earn more money. So the high school right now has about a million or sitting there that we've earned for, from the state for the age of the building. So we've got about nearly eight million, nearly nine million dollars in mod monies that we can get from the state. Now, the state uses new mayor, we don't get all of it sometimes, we only get eighty percent of what they say it takes. If our architect told me it took like twenty-seven hun, uh, twenty-seven, seventeen thousand dollars to build an IU on average, it takes it nine, it takes eleven, and you only get eighty percent of it, eleven. So there's, there's a game there with the numbers, but we do have, I do know what we can get because it tells from what we can.
I just figured there'd be confusion when people hear that.
And when you draw that money from the state, just for clarification, you have to use it at that project, and to get reimbursed, you have to complete the project, turn the stuff in, and then they reimburse you, but you gotta dot the i's across the t's, because they hold you accountable, which is good, they don't...
Now, I guess Amy's not here, but, and I don't remember how much we have remaining in the previous splash.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
But that money can be used for, does it have to be allocated, does that money have to be allocated for something?
Well, we have two, a couple of different things that have been allocated money, and well, there's a couple of them that we're all gonna recommend, like the communication system, just a few minutes. We still got a million that was allocated in technology, so that can go within that technology area. There are a couple of areas that we may need to reallocate some money, or redesignate some of that money to some, we approximately have several, I forgot how much you told me we had still in the Jasper Middle School.
Two point four.
Two point four.
Allocated Jasper Middle for upgrades in case we didn't close it, that'll have to be reallocated. And you have to do it equitable, every school has to get a portion, you know what I'm saying? And so the state's holding everybody to that now. They're not, they used to, they did, but now they are, so, you know, the camera system, that was a great deal. We're gonna do, if we get to do these cameras in classrooms, we can do that too, and that'll be allocated per school, and it makes it equitable, and that's what we gotta do. We gotta, and that's something that I'll depend on Amy to help make sure it's right, because she's really good with the numbers there. But yes, we can use that money that you're... You know, and plus, you know, we gotta buy buses, we still gotta upgrade technology. It's just, you know, splashed is, it's a great tool for school systems, and I hope we never lose it because it would go back to the taxpayer and have to pay for it if we lose it.
as was presented?
Motion to approve the list of capital improvements as presented.
Mr. Long, I hear second.
I'll second.
Ms. Lewis, any discussion?
All in favor.
Five not opposed, motion carries there. Next will be the construction management farm.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend the construction management farm for our school systems for these upcoming projects. Carol Daniel.
Carol Daniel Construction. And Mr. Bell sat with us on a committee, we have a committee of four people, and we received five proposals, and RFQ means request for qualifications for a construction manager, and we asked for it to be at risk, and at risk means when they give us a price, it can't go over, but if we come under and we build it for less, that's our money, they don't keep it, it's not like contract, and we get to keep the money. So we have a lot more control when it's at risk, it's going more comfortable, but we had five pretty good applications, and we had two that were just neck and neck. I was showing the State Department guy, our guy, what we did with the results, and we have to grade them and make comments, and he said, my guy, I've never seen comments like this, what'd y'all do? Y'all tore this thing apart. I said, yes, because it was so close. We had to find nitpicking stuff to pick a good cup, the best cup, and we went as far as their education, I mean, we, we got down in the nitty gritty on this thing, and I personally came up with a great solution. I mean, I've worked with both companies in my career, you couldn't have gone wrong either way, but I, I applaud the staff, the, I stepped back, I just got out of it because I didn't care, I liked both of them, I can work with both of them, I told them, y'all need to pick this apart and figure it out, and I applaud them for doing a good job. Carol Daniel Construction will do a great job for y'all, I'm telling you, a great job.
Being on that committee there, and I was glad I did after it was over, because it gave me some confidence in how to go through and to pick somebody, so I have a lot of confidence in the decisions made there.
There's a lot of rumors that we just pick who we want, and it wasn't like that.
I didn't know a soul there.
No.
What we were looking at here was strictly by grade sheet, and it was, I have a lot of confidence in it.
We appreciate you doing that, and that way if it's screwed up...
I know that. I just told everybody. I wasn't gonna say that, and he, he's the one calling me out. He said, yeah, we had him on.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, so everybody knows we...
You have to cover yourself. You have to cover yourself, really.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, that's what Dr. Wilson wanted to recommend for us.
All right, since I have been called out, I will make the motion. Since I was making fun of y'all, second that. Is there any discussion on that?
So, that means you secondly held responsible for it?
That's right.
Well, we, when we go to these, our state meetings and things, all these firms are there. They have things on display. And so, in the breaks, you know, we all mingle through their booths and we look at the, the buildings and things that they've done. And Carol Daniel's done some really nice stuff, so I think she'll do us a good job. So, I feel real comfortable with Daniel's pick. Daniel's pick.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Five, I don't, motion carries. Next will be Pickens High School upgrades.
All right, I brought these to you as a, as a package deal because it all pertains to the same area of the school and all that. And it consists of turfing the field. It consists of turfing the field. And the, and the field turf, I've, I've installed one other in my career, one other field turf field. And I did months and months and months of research on field turf at that time. So, I really felt comfortable not having to do that this time because it's the best. They did Mercedes-Benz Stadium recently, and they do 90% of the fields in the state of Georgia. So, Chris knows them. He knows their product. They stand by it. They'll take care of it if you have a problem. I've got two acquaintances that I work with, operations in Lumpkin, operations in Fanning, Fanning County. Had problems with the field after about nine years. They totally replaced it and turned it down. I mean, they stand by those products. So, you're gonna get a good, safe deal in what you're looking at right here.
I believe you told us, I'm sorry, I believe you told us too, that the product that they had to have replaced is no longer being used, so we won't have that problem.
Right, right. It was a bad fiber, and they, they had about 17 fields they put in and did that. And this was the last one that was on that list, the fiber, and they replaced it for free. The field turf and the track, and this, this track project's major because it was really never installed correctly the first time you've ever seen it. It's a 1.224, $731.51, 1.2 and a half, 1.2 million, 1.22 million. But that's turf, that's track, that's everything. And that's it. Done through, that is bid through a TCBN contract. It was a state and federal contract. So, we know we're getting the best product we can get. That's that. The Musco lighting, which is all the lighting in the poles. We had really a lot of comments about how dull the lighting was and people filming their kids to be sent off to college and recruited. And they couldn't see the numbers on the kids through the cameras and all that. So, Musco came in and looked at it, and they said they could upgrade it using our poles and all. So, we're saving a lot of money by doing that. But that's 188,295. And then the scoreboard, which is state of art. It's, I don't know if you've seen Carsville or Lumpkin Counties, or there's two or three more around here. It's a, it's a full screen video display. But when you play soccer or, or you have track or you have football on it, a portion of it is your scoreboard and the rest of it's video display. CTAE, our technology department, and that, it'll be a great tool where we can start filming the games, replaying them back. We need to do, I think we could even send our video to ETC and they could quit coming. We could just stream it to them because we, a lot of this goes around. If you wanna pull one up and look at, go to White Counties and look at their sports stuff and where they video their games, their kids do the announcing. It's really neat. And it's a great program for our, our high school kids. So, this is not just a football scoreboard. This is a video display board for athletics down there. Plus, graduation. You can show each kid coming across. You can, you can do, the, the programs can film. They, they took the drone up, filmed the game with the drone. They were showing it on the screen with the drone. It's just a good teaching tool for new technology that we have in schools now. They're recommending, our, our committee that Coach Parker and them put together and looked at, it's the same one Lumpkin has. It's 898 square feet, 375. And that's where they, that's where the special digital recorder and video replay instantly moved. I mean, that was cheap compared to that 700, $7,000 for that car. So, I mean, I couldn't see not putting the digital display, I mean, replaying all that. That's those three in a lump sum there. My total price to not exceed on that. It also includes the welcome center. Includes. Includes the welcome center and the stoplight grades and all. So, all that's included in this total number I view right here. It's not just these several projects.
And this will all be done by, before graduation?
The only thing that might be a glitch would be the welcome center. And that'd be because we tear up the road. And we may not wanna do that until after school. The rest of it'll be done before school. That would be the only thing I would, I'd really think about. Do we really wanna do that while schools in process and mess up that road? And they can do it in a month. Put schools out. It'll take them any time. We'll have it there already to get over.
Power, network, everything else.
That's what we recommend, or I submitted Dr. Wilson.
And I would like to say, I'm sort of the resident skeptic on the turf. And this, this is not your grandmother's turf. This is a very, very nice product. I looked at it at some of our state conferences and stuff. And this is exciting. It's got dragons.
I think we all were a little, as a teacher, I'm like, academics, that's what comes first, academics. But I really feel that this is a good option. Like you said, it's a domino effect. That we really need to kinda get some of these things done before we can get to the others. And I really love the idea that it's gonna be usable by so many people and not just, you know, the football team. But now we will be able to have lots of different opportunities to use this field, not only for our school system, but for the community as well. So, that's what, I think sold me a little bit more on it too.
We spend a lot of money every year maintaining that field. You remember when I came in here and Al told me, he said, "I want that field to be pretty graduation." We had, the only way to do it was spend money because it had not been maintained. You know, you want, all this money you're spending is not in vain. You're saving money in the Elliott because we're not spending that money.
I'll take, I'll take the heat on that because I think I was the one complaining about, when I look at other schools' graduations and their fields are nice, green grass. And then you look at ours and it's splatchy and brown. And, you know, that's just, you know, that's what people, we get, like you said, 4,000 people, some of them don't live here. I mean, some of them are, you know, coming in to watch family graduate. And that's what they see, and that's what they.
Perception.
The impression they get of our school. And we've got great schools. We got great facilities. I don't know. Maybe I'm just kinda a snob, but I would know that we've got great schools and great facilities.
I wouldn't be number one in everything.
Yeah, why not?
Absolutely. I would like to remind our constituents and public and everything is that when, just as Ms. White stated, there is a difference between what can be used for academics. That is the pot over here from taxpayer dollars and money from the state and grants. And then what we use for capital improvements, which is splash, which is the one cent sales tax. And for all circumstances almost, the two pots can never match. I mean, we could pay for all this out of our general fund, which is our taxpayers'. But we don't have to do that because you've approved the splash, and we can use it out of splash fund. So, it's not taking away from anything instructional or academically. It's just adding to it, and it's not coming out of that pot over here. I would also like to recommend on the list, our camera systems, our cameras in the classroom system. I'd like to start with our elementary first just because we have to do it with equity with the schools. And that would come out of the designated money that's set aside already for technology. And right now that we can do 200 classrooms for $1 million. And it's more than just, you know, it's the whole emergency system and audio.
Is that in this approval?
It's not in that. It was actually plugged out.
Is that in the, in the pool of what Amy looked at and said that we're, we're good on?
It is. It just didn't make it to the package.
It, it was approved by y'all as a, a designated money for technology, but it wasn't specified for cameras. It was specified, and it really, it probably is okay legally. But you, be transparent, you may want to just put it, say it out and put it into the agenda like this. So, I'm not sure. Do you have to do it now in the agenda?
I would think so.
Do you wait till the end and then add it, or?
Well, right, or we, there's not been a motion made yet on accepting the list. As is, we could, I would recommend, Mr. Cameron, that ask for amended amendment of the agenda to include the purchase of the camera system under whichever one that is, and amend the agenda first.
Can't you say included under this particular item here?
I would include it under, just under the approval of the upgrades. Or we could include it either way, totally separate or, everybody go to amend the agenda. So, you can do it as a separate one or put it under that one.
Do you have the information here?
Yes, yeah. It's 200 classrooms for $5,000. It's audio visual and emergency. It's one, one meter.
Martha, should we do it as like a letter I?
Separate because this is a request for approval of Pickens High School upgrades. This is not the.
So, should we make it like a letter I on the agenda, on the?
Or H?
H, sorry. I do know the alphabet.
What grade do you take?
That's a sad thing. Kindergarten first and second. I do know the alphabet. I had to sing it first.
See, I got a camera saying that. You whispering in my ear. You set me up, didn't you? Yeah, I couldn't resist that. How'd you work that? Usually the one that's coming asking is blanking. He was behind me.
I'm not wearing, I'm not wearing my green shirt. Smoky mirrors.
I see that. You thought, thought you'd slip that by me, didn't you? Saw how you did that.
Should've seen the gestures and making.
No, Pickens got me on camera. That's okay.
As long as y'all got this line, that was Amy. I mean, we're, we're concerned about grades, and we're concerned about money. As long as we're not getting in trouble with our scores and our money.
And trust me, I know Amy well enough, and I'm not gonna recommend anything.
Okay. Cause I know she would.
Yeah, she would. And I know that. Okay. Here, we're gonna, we'll continue on here before I make any changes.
Okay.
Approval of the Pickens High School upgrades. Did I hear a motion for that?
More motion to approve the upgrades of the high school. I'll second that.
Mrs. White, second Miss Finley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Motion carries. Next will be to Jasper Elementary School old gym to technology offices. We've already had that.
I talked about that. That's, that's, that number is probably gonna be about $100 over, in my opinion. But we gotta make sure with this loading dock and stuff, and according to what they do with the road, the city. So, those things can be, so that's why I put a number like that.
Are they still talking about maybe opening up the road back?
Last I talked to the mayor, he was, but that's been a month or so ago.
So, there's beginning, you know, we gotta turn the dock this way and build a retaining wall, or can we come out this way and not have to build a retaining wall? I just wanted to cover it so we can be carrying on because I'd like to have that finished by the time school starts or before. And he's designing on it now. He's actually doing drawings on it now for us.
Did I hear a motion to approve the conversion of Jasper Elementary School old gym to technology offices and warehouse?
I'll make the motion that we convert Jasper Elementary School old gym to technology offices and warehouse.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed. Next, communication radios and transportation.
We, we rent a, a space on the tower on Burt Mountain for our radio system. It's pretty expensive, costs several thousand dollars a month. These are, these are old, old analog radios too. And they're going away. Analog's going away. We have been in contact with the sheriff's office because we didn't feel like we have very good communications with them other than picking up the phone and calling them because our radios weren't linked together. They didn't work together with their system. They sent a company that does Cherokee here all over the state to do the 911 and radio systems and all. And now all the school systems are trying to go to it too because it's instant contact with the SRO, the sheriff, or even the teacher can do it if we give them access to this. So, it's, it's a safety issue in this day and time and a response time that we can make happen. We also put on our buses. We have a base station at each school. Is Jennifer here? No, she's not here. She had called me this week about needing some handheld radios. Then we're actually gonna be giving them some handheld radios for the schools too. It's a lot of products. It's the GPS system for our buses too. We don't really have a GPS system because you have to have cell service to have a true GPS system on buses. We don't have cell services because of, because of forge. So, I can instantly, if somebody calls and says, "This bus has run me out of the road at so and so", I can pull it up to where the bus is at. Well, no, they're not even close to you. It's a run bus, or we're broke down, or we've had a wreck or something. We can tell where they're at anytime we want to with this system. It's part of the deal. You'll pay any extra for it. It's just a, it's an upgrade. It's coming anyway. And we, we've been talking about all these projects. I feel like everybody thinks we're just asking for a lot of money to do a lot of things. And we've been talking to these projects for years, ever since I've been here. Ever since I've been here, we've brought these projects up. It's now coming to a point in time that we've collected the money, the SPOS is in good shape, that we can start doing some of these projects. So this was just another one that we've been looking at for a long time. Dr. Wilson's in big time favor of ours. He's, he's asked me to pursue it and I have. And that's the price that we're going to need, it's about five hundred thousand. It's going to be give or take. We may have to buy an extra radio here or there to make sure everybody's got everything they need. That's, we put just a little bit of extra money in there, not much. We will have repeaters in all our schools, they'll be mounted in our buildings. They, they have already done a test and they think we'll have better service than we have now. They feel like that with our mapping system that they tested it will, it will be. Even transportation will have a repeater. But if there is a dead spot, we've already talked with the county, they're going to work with us and help us if we had to use a tower there or something, we can put an extra repeater on. Because it's going to benefit them too. They're going to end up trying to piggyback onto us for it's all over, so. Anyway, this is just another thing that we're heading towards safer schools. And this is another part of that. Dr. Wilson, you'd like to recommend that for us?
How does that impact the, what you're talking about, our monthly fee that we're paying now? Does that wipe that out?
That'd go away too.
We own everything. Not only do we own everything, but our connections with the sheriff's office, anytime they add a tower or another repeater, we can bounce off of it also.
So we'll have instant access to the sheriff's department? We'll be able to flip-flop the channel and be able to speak to them immediately?
They, they will. Yes, we will.
And our buses will know exactly where they are anytime now?
It will be, it'll be certain radios that can do that. We couldn't let everybody do that. It would be him and maybe me and transportation, one of the, one transportation director or something like that. But we, they can get us and we can get them instantly. But we, because we can't, we can't bog down their, their radio ways. We, we have to respect who can do it to radio.
But what, but what it will allow, not only will allow several of our radios to contact them, but it will allow their radios to contact all of our radios.
Immediately.
They can turn to our frequency and call to everybody, the buses and anybody in the school immediately.
We don't have that now either. And we can't. It, they just, it doesn't work.
Not without careful.
Two, two is reradio.
This would be, this is great. This might be the best thing y'all could do, isn't it? I like this, really.
Okay, I hear a motion to approve the communication radios for transportation in all schools.
I make the motion to approve communication radios for transportation at all schools.
Ms. Lewis, second. Ms. White, any discussion? All those in favor? Five opposed. Okay, we're going to, we're holding off on adding, amending again and adding that until we get some information that we can display.
Oh, the cameras?
We saw it, but we, I like that subject we presented.
Yeah, because that's a, that's a big experience. Unless it's people to see what they're talking about.
We spent enough money? That checkbook is hot.
I'm hurting, I think. It's Christmas.
When you're talking, talking money like this, it's not, it's hard to wrap your mind around these dollar figures. So that's not, I mean, I deal with million-dollar projects at work, but not this many at at one time. So it's, it's still a little, a little hard to grasp.
Nervous.
I think it's just two or action items. Next item of the big board comments. Don't forget anything else to comment on, but.
I'd like to pursue this like something.
Maybe you want me to, maybe you don't.
Now, I would like to comment on the calendar and the grade configurations. Just something from my heart. I am sympathetic to those who would like to have shorter school year as a teacher. I would like to have a shorter school year as well. However, I do agree with Dr. Wilson. As long as our test scores are low, I believe it would be irresponsible on our part if we decreased the number of instructional days. I'm more than willing to look at it again, as we've said. I'm more than willing to look at it again next year. If grades come up and we kind of are, have a better idea of what we can do to, to support our students, I would be in favor of reducing it. But I think right now it would be wise to keep things as they are. I have not been as alarmed about removing sixth graders from the elementary school and removing them from the middle school. I, I've just not been as concerned as some people were in our community meetings. For one reason, the kids are going to be together on the buses anyway. So I don't see it as that big of a problem. My personal preference, I voted for the five-sixth, but my personal preference would have been to keep the six-eight configuration. Primarily because that would not, would not impact, the new school would not impact the elementary school. It would not impact the high school. It would have been strictly six, seven and eight. That's what I would have preferred. In my experience as a middle school teacher, there was minimal contact between the grades and it was controlled by schedules, different times for the different grades. The grades were on different hallways. It just was not as much of a concern as some people who maybe just aren't familiar with that. It really wasn't that much of a problem. So I would have preferred just to have, to have kept it that way. I voted for the five-sixth configuration for two reasons. First of all, I believe it's the most fiscally conservative, most fiscally responsible plan. And I also wanted to do that to demonstrate my support to Dr. Wilson. That was his recommendation. I respect his experience and his expertise. And I also did it to support my fellow board members. I think it's, it's good that we are united and I do support this. Told you what my personal preference was, but I'm on board for five-sixth. And I would encourage all of us, the community as a whole, not just those of us in this room, but I want to encourage all of us in the community to, to move forward, to work together. I think this is going to be a great thing and to realize that we're doing this for our current students, but also our future students who have come to us in years to come.
See, I did want you to say that.
I knew you did.
And I, you know, I, I kind of can piggyback off of that because, I don't know, some of y'all in this room may be as old as I am, but, you know, when we were in school, you know, we had everything from kindergarten all the way through seventh grade, right here. We all rode the same school buses. I know times are different, it's, it's not like it used to be, you know. Probably we all wish it was, but, but I, I didn't, didn't really have the concerns and maybe my concerns were not placed correctly, but oh, I know, I know. But I, I didn't really have the concerns of separating the kids. The thing that really sold me on it was the possibilities of what we can offer those seventh and eighth grade kids when we've got them all in one spot. And a lot of things that we look at when we're going through budgeting and different things is, is looking at what classes make, what funds, what doesn't fund. And when you've got your seventh and eighth grade kids spread out between two schools, you know, you have limited things you can offer because you don't have enough kids. If we put all those kids in the same place, I'm excited to see what possibly we'll be able to offer these kids. So that's my opinion.
And, and I, I agree Byron, that, that was absolutely my reason for supporting that, that choice. I didn't want to put the sixth graders in there with them just for sheer numbers because it would have made our middle school, I, I think, not a manageable size, but certainly not the most desirable size student, student numbers wise. But this way we can start giving them high school credit for some of the classes because we will now have enough students to talk to binding that we can get those class sizes up in order to offer those curriculum choices. We'll be able to, I think, pull some foreign language in and start that in our middle school, which by, at the separation that we currently have, we don't have enough students in either school to do these things by binding and we'll be able to, to do that and to offer, you know, better, better opportunities for some of the connections classes and the band and chorus classes that put them all together. And our athletic programs are already together. So that, that just pulls the school spirit together. So I'm real excited about that. And I do think that our community will see some cost savings by us doing this. So that'll be something, something that will appreciate as well.
Yeah, I, I looked at the, those, these grade EOC classes and how, how successful they are. Those proficient numbers are extremely high, not just in this county, they are in this county. But all the counties I've been to that were offering those classes in that middle school had extreme success. And I was amazed at how successful they were, so it's very good there.
My comments are just nothing to do with school except for everyone to thankful for all of our employees and all that everyone does each and every day. And thankful for you at this Christmas season. I hope everybody has a very merry Christmas and a very blessed new year. I think we've got some great things going, amazing things. Like Byron said, it's a little scary. And I'm sure there's going to be some people unhappy with our decisions. But hopefully there's more people that are happy with the decisions because we really truly want what's best for our kids and what's best for our schools. Every one of us sitting here really wants best for you guys employees and for the students. So we don't take these decisions lightly. We, we think about them really hard and cry about them and really study, read about them and all of us sit and mash together behind the closed doors. But we really come out in front of you guys and want to make sure that we are doing what's best for everyone. So I think our new year is going to be great. I think we're headed for some amazing things. Not that we're not already amazing, I think it's just going to be even better. Very excited and thank you for all that, all of you do.
Right with that, I'd, I'd like to thank our, our board team because we truly did function, I think. We've, we've gone through lots of money, lots of mashing, and I think that you will notice our votes were all five-oh and eight, which means that we've fought tooth and nail about some of this. And I appreciate Daniel's leadership.
But in a very nice way.
And Dr. Wilson's leadership and input from both Dana and Tony and Stacy particularly. They've been extremely helpful as we pluck through this. And I'm, I'm real proud of what we've accomplished here. So thank y'all for your support.
And you know, we got people in here that I have confidence in. We've got confidence in the people that are helping you, you know, present things to you. So it makes it a lot easier to make decisions.
Well, you have to have confidence in what they're telling you because none of us are experts in these things.
And that's why I wanted to make that statement at the beginning because I, I know the perception of what we do here. People think that we have, people in the public think we have offices here. We're all part of this. Now, I feel like if, if we could count all the time, I'd stay away. Take it back. Because I've got about a sixty-hour a week job here, but that's not the case. We have jobs and we have to come in and we have to be dependent on the people that's, that's in place to give us the information and get it correctly. So, so I, I feel confident in what we've heard tonight.
I believe I got the best staff in the entire state of Georgia and they do an awesome job. I do appreciate that.
Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Next time I'm to adjourn, make it official.
Love to make the motion to adjourn.
I've already got your number.
I did.
No discussion?
Yes, all in favor?